The last time I was here, Garrett reminded me that I told a story. And so it's his fault I won't tell this story today. At the Jefferson Church show, we've been going through a series of sermons on the fruit spirit. And Sunday was compassion. This is a story about compassion. Not a good story about compassion, but listen. When I went to get my driver's license renewed, the local motor vehicle bureau was packed in line the insta-long for almost an hour until a man ahead of me finally got his license. He inspected this photo for a moment and commented to the clerk, "I was standing in line so long, I ended up looking pretty grouchy in this picture." The clerk looked at his picture closely and said, "That's okay." He reassured the man, "That's how you're gonna look when the cops pull you over anyway." That's great. Father, thankful for this time we have this now to come to this meeting. I just pray, Father, as we have given the story about compassion, Father, that you'll help us to realize that compassion is action, doing the right thing at the right time. I pray, Father, that all of us here in this room and all listening will make it a goal in our life to do the right thing at the right time. Be with these people as they meet today. We pray, Father, for this week as the National Day of Prayer coming up on Thursday, when people all over this land will be meeting together. Father, we'd be praying for unity and for compassion, for love, for joy. Father, we would be praying for this country and its future. We just pray, Father, that you'll help us to live the right way each and every day. We just pray, Father, for the Holy Spirit working in our life that allows us to do this. We just pray, Father, for good decisions and pleasure of life in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes for the last meeting. Second.
Good minutes and seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Good morning, sir.
You got five proposals from consultants for design of Bridge 90. And so I think you've given a chance to read the proposals. And we need to select one of them, one of the consultants. You know, if you time this afternoon, you can meet in my office one at a time.
Okay.
Warren, we'll score that, we'll score it just like we did before with those scoring sheets for each consultant. And then we'll come back to the next meeting and make an official.
Yeah. I have to send it in and get their stamp approval. I'll tabulate it all and let you know when you can announce at the next meeting.
Okay.
I have, I know it's not drainage board, but I have Dale Munson's here for a problem in the Springer ditch. And he wants to add some branches to it within the right way to alleviate some pond. So we went out and looked at it yesterday. He says he could do the work for $500, but I asked Jerry, and usually you don't pay for branches to, to the main. So I said, bring that in front of you. Instead of waiting for a drainage board, especially I'm not planning on being there to have a seminar that day. So I didn't know if you want to wait until then, decide on it as drainage board, or think about it, or you want to...
Basically, it's up to us to give the property owner permission to attach to that county drain.
Yeah.
But it's not up to us to...
To pay for it?
To pay for that attachment.
That's what I asked Jerry, I was on before.
Yeah, I thought that's what we've done in the past. I would make a motion that we allow the property owner to attach to the county drain at their expense with runners off of it.
Yeah, there'd be, he said six inch runners. And it's either an 18 or a 20 inch main.
Okay. Springer drain. I'll second the motion.
Good minutes and seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, he told me that we could skip immediately. Michael?
Just had my monthly report and some things that I'm going over. So email server, we actually had a lower number of emails this month for some reason. I'm not sure if that's a matter of, we just had a slow little month, or if it was just a matter that the recording wasn't correct, because there were a couple of days where they did maintenance, so it's possible that something wasn't recorded the correct way. But according to the stats, we had 61,700 emails in, 44,500 were allowed through the spam virus blocker. What makes me think that it might be a matter of the criteria not being recorded correctly was there at the end of the month where it just kind of dropped all of a sudden on how many shows that are blocked on that little graph, you can see where it just dips all of a sudden. So phone calls, we had 65,408 with 36,594 answered throughout all the county system. So, and for tickets, we had 264 total, 885 were county, 75 were city, and four were for just public requests, generally changes to website and that kind of thing. I went to a cybersecurity seminar last Tuesday for, it was put on by one of the water departments. And they went over some things that I'm working to try to make an official cybersecurity plan. And that's one of the things they recommended that everybody have. Another thing that they went and talked about was that they do, like, he was, the guy that gave him the class was from IDM. He said, one of the things they're required to do, I think he said, three or four classes that every employee is required to go to per year. And they put, they give them throughout, like, they'll do three or four quarter and split up the employees, so they ought, by the end of the quarter, everybody's gone to that class, and they can do the same thing the next quarter. I'm gonna look at possibly doing something like that and arranging with the offices to where a couple people from each office can go to the class, I mark them off the list, and then we do it again, not really long, like 15, 20 minute kind of thing, going over how to avoid ransomwares and what to watch out for for phishing attacks and emails, those kinds of things, answer any questions they have. And basically, kind of combine cybersecurity training with a little refresher on computer skills in case they have questions or something that they've not been able to get answered because they're doing their jobs, they don't have time. But I don't want to take them away from their regular work too long, you know, obviously all the offices need their people. So, but that'll be, once I get some kind of plan for that, I'll bring it to you. I'll bring it to you guys individually, let you see kind of what I'm talking about, and go from there. So, the new recorder is in in Superior Court, it's been there for two weeks, haven't had any problems. And from all indications, it is like going from a broken down Ford Escort to a Ferrari. So, they all seem pretty happy with it, so.
Good.
Do, and then that's pretty much it for me. So any questions or problems?
No. I think the comment was that they had emailed that you could remember escorts.
Okay, well, we'll go. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty's not here. Cam Sparks.
Hello. For those of you that don't know me, I am the Cali Veterans Circus Officer. First and foremost is, I will be gone May, around May 20th through June 20th. I'll be gone for volunteer training, and I'll actually be in Poland, so I'll be out of the country, so. I'm gonna let all the veterans know that I'll be out of the office, and they can leave me emails, or they can contact the VA if they need anything while I'm gone. On average, I'm averaging meeting with probably about 20 veterans a week. If they can't come into my office, I actually go out to the office to meet them. So I want, I'll let the veterans know that if I'm not in the office, it's not that, I'm just not in the office. I'm out actually helping veterans. I go out to the nursing homes and to the clubs, if they feel more comfortable being at one of the clubs. So, last month, I think the average monthly award was around $62,000 that the veterans were bringing into the county. That's how much they were awarded last month. I'm still averaging the 24 hours a week, going out, doing outreach also. The biggest issue I've had is just letting everybody know that I'm here, but with the help of the News Examiner and social media, the word's getting out. So that's...
Very good.
About all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
No. Thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you very much.
And for the TV audience, that was Cam Sparks. She's a veteran service officer for Fayette-Cali, and her office is in the annex across the street from the courthouse. First door on the left, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Jenna.
I feel like I've been here a lot. I'm just here today getting approval for a new hire to replace administrative assistant position. It is Jessica Tandy. She's actually graduating from Purdue. Her last final's this Friday, so she's available next week. And I did want to note, she is a sister to the probation officer, Lindsay Tandy. I did talk to the judge about that, and I don't see that there's a conflict anywhere as far as that goes. And I'm not on the agenda for the council tonight for the 144. So, and I do have a copy of her resume if anybody wants to see that, but I'm just asking for approval to hire her.
I don't think we could go too long with Purdue graduate.
No, I know. I desperately need someone. We have an opening again for the Jimon. I think it's gonna be for Jimon Clerical again, because Crystal ended up going to the Circuit Court instead of making it to us. So, we've gone without a Jimon Clerical for several months now.
We've kind of played musical employies around here, don't we?
Music chairs is definitely being played right now, so, okay.
Is this the grant?
Yeah, this is for the grant position for the Administrative Assistant Community Corrections Liaison.
So, how long is that grant currently?
We, this current grant period will end June 30th, but we have gotten approved for the next grant year, which will begin July 1st until June 30th, 2019. So we have another year of that.
So, her employment would be at least that long then?
Correct.
And she's aware of that?
Yes. Anyone I hire for that position is aware it is a grant-funded position, so if the grant goes away, there's a possibility that position will go away.
Should we make that 144 approval to that ending date? And then redo it once the grant's reapproved?
Yeah.
For the year 20 or 1920? I'd make a motion that we approve that 144 request with an ending date of, you said June?
30, June 30th, 2018.
19.
You're covering the next year too.
Since you do have the, you've been approved for that funding, so, yeah.
That would be fine, okay.
I'll second the motion.
Good minutes and seconds to approve hiring of Ms. Tandy until June of 2019?
At least.
At least.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you, Jenna.
Have a good day.
You too.
It's beautiful out.
Yes, it is.
Miss Falcone, please.
Good morning.
Hi, Paula. How are you?
This is my last official act as health nurse. I'm here today to recommend, actually, Dr. White has recommended that Megan Sparks replace me as health nurse. She's currently a nurse in our office. She's a grant-funded position, and he's recommended that we move her into my position and then advertise her job and interview for that.
Okay. That's the Broadway Cares Grant?
No, it's actually local health maintenance and the nicotine or tobacco settlement grants are combined and fund that position.
Got a motion to move Megan into the office position.
Has that, has Dr. White took that to the board? Is that, has that been approved by the board?
It, we haven't had, we haven't had the opportunity because we haven't had the board meeting.
Wait, isn't that normally the procedure? Didn't that...
And he may have spoken to the board, I'm not exactly sure.
Come from that board?
I will find out.
Before we approve, I mean...
I'm not sure how that works.
Yeah, I think...
If that works, I would need a 144 too. Okay. Does it take, I gotta have that for you?
But I think...
Let me, let me, let me double check.
I think that needs to go through the board, because that's, that's funded through, I mean, that board runs that, operates that budget.
You may be right.
Is that...
Well, we, we pay that salary.
Through the health, health rate?
The position she wants to fill, we, we pay that salary through the Health Department's tax level.
Yes, yes.
That's not grant-related.
Right.
The, how much sway the Health Board members themselves plan, I really don't know.
Okay, okay. Do you remember how you were?
Through Dr. White.
Just through Dr. White?
It was through Dr. White.
I mean, I, it doesn't matter, I mean, as long as we're doing things legally.
I don't know the procedure. I'd have to look.
I can check, I can check if you would feel more comfortable, and then...
Table to our next meeting. Yeah, I'd make a motion that we table this request till the next meeting, pending, you checking on with Dr. White and the Health Board.
I think we're heading full approval of the Health Board.
All right. And I do also have a Broadway Cares Grant that I've applied for in the past.
Yes.
That I would like to reapply for. And it's, there's no matching funds, it's just a, up to $7,500 grant for harm reduction supplies.
Okay, we need to go on the table first.
Do we have a vote on the table in 144 for the hire for the new health nurse?
I'll second.
Good minutes and seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Now, on the Broadway Cares Grant?
Can you elaborate a little bit? What's it used for?
It's for, excuse me, it's for harm reduction supplies for the, our harm reduction program, the needle exchange, just to purchase supplies. And it's strictly just supplies, there's no...
Okay. I'd make a motion to allow the Health Department to reapply for the Broadway Cares Grant through... Diana, do you do that with them, or?
I work with Paul on that, yes.
Through, through Diana? I'll second the motion.
Good minutes and seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Dave Rickman? Good morning.
I'm up here to try to see if I can get approval for a new hiring. I turned in my 144. Name's Mike Burger. The other, my other person quit on me like somebody says a revolving door. I just need to see if I can get approval for that.
I'll move to approve the 144 for the animal shelter. Second.
Good minutes and seconds. Approve the 144 for the animal shelter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Hope this fellow stays a little longer than I.
Me too.
Does Judge have, does Judge have something to add?
Well, we got Michelle there for this next year.
Okay.
I'm here just to advise, the letter that I gave you is the award letter from the Department of Correction for funding from July 1 of 18 through June 30 of 19. Total, we were awarded $1,069,824. That funding includes the Community Corrections Base Grant, and we were awarded additional $56,700 for one new full-time position. It also includes $121,000 for the Drug Court, which is going to have one new full-time position. Jail treatment services was the same amount as before, $176,500. Probation, that funds the two probation officers and the administrative assistant that Jenna just asked for, for $167,700. And a new project on prosecutor's diversion for $42,860, which is a part-time position in that office. So we gained two full-time positions for the county and part-time. And the other issue that I have is back several months ago, when the Small Business Energy Saver Program from Duke Energy on changing the lighting in the building. We're having a problem in our building with that. I've talked to them Friday and again yesterday. There are four lights that haven't been changed. One, they just forgot, that's in a hallway. Three, they are refusing to replace because they're over stairwells. The subcontractor that came in told us it was against their company's policy to do anything above a stairwell. And then the Duke guy I talked to Friday told me it was against the ocean. They're wanting paid. I have never received the bill. I think possibly it could have went to the auditor's office, I'm not sure. Told them they need to send me a bill, but I'm not authorizing payment until all the work's done. So now they want to reduce the bill and not include those lights. Those are the lights that, if you remember, they have the valve, emergency ballast on them, and then the batteries, you have to get up there and reset it or replace the whole ballast. I paid a local company here to do it, evidently they, they're beeping. In the dorm area where somebody has to, everybody sleeps, there's a constant beep. So they have to be replaced. So, you guys need to make, make a decision on what we're gonna do, and I don't, he told me, well, not when I said I'm not paying it until it's, the job's completed. He told me, well, 99% is completed, so that's where we're at.
99% doesn't count, doesn't Michelle?
No. And they could eas, I could see them not wanting to put a ladder on the stairways in the dorm. They need enough people to hold, but there's no problem with them bringing a cherry picker in. That back door's extra wide that faces the jail. They could bring a cherry picker in there and raise it right up and change those.
Okay.
So, I don't know what to do or who to, to contact.
We'll find out who we need to contact.
Okay.
I have no problem with our goodness.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. We'll see if we can't get your light.
Michelle, a question on the grant, if you don't mind. The two full-time and the one that, well, the two full-time primarily. The grant allows, correct me if I'm wrong, but the grant allows for salary and benefits, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It pays salary and fringe.
Okay.
Up to a total of 61.5 previous years this year. I think it's like, they were just 57.6 or 56.712.
And that covers the, that is for the fringes and everything?
Yes. This year, they put a cap on the salary at $31,026.5 for benefits.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And that includes our new... Is that what you wanted to talk to us about, Mr. Freed?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know about the drug court.
Very good. We're glad to hear that's been approved.
The drug court, Your Honor, the employee, the full-time employee, that person will work in your office under you?
Yeah, I talked to Bill about this and other things. There's some incidental things relative to that I also wanted to say. You know, there's the old holding cell when the remodel was done, it's in the back hallway between the courts, you know, the secure hallway that runs behind the, behind the courts between the two courts? Some people don't even realize it's there. There's an old holding cell there, you know, it's meant to hold prisoners while they're waiting. It's never been used. There was something wrong with the plumbing, there was a toilet in there. I was told there was something wrong with the plumbing. So, it's just been locked. So that square footage in the new building has just been 100% wasted for a decade now. So, and it's close to me. It's gonna be my person. So I talked to Bill about, hey, can we get that toilet out of there, just cap that, and we'll just turn that into an office for the, for the Drug Court Coordinator.
Did he see it?
He didn't see a problem.
Okay.
I mean, we may have to, I may have to talk to Fire Marshal about, because it's got like a, like a vault door on it, you know, it's a big heavy steel door. They had to put like a regular knob on it or something, because obviously, you can't get out if you're in. That was the whole point of the, that was the whole point of the...
That was the whole point of it.
I'm no fire genius, but I can figure out that you can't have a door like that on an arm, so. We will have to do something so you can leave your office when you need to. The other thing is, besides the Drug Court Coordinator, there is money in that grant for a couple of other things, one of which is actually an employee that won't be my employee. I put in for, and didn't think I would necessarily get, but did, a special deputy prosecutor who serves only the Drug Court.
Okay.
So they won't be off doing this and that, just, they only do that. And I think Ms. Jones's intention was to possibly keep Mr. Fall on in that position, just in that limited role.
Okay.
So, it's $24,000 inclusive of benefits, or inclusive of, you know, FICA and all that, you know, so we've got all that, no, no benefit. So we have that. Now, that would actually be an employee though. But the other thing I asked for was special money just for a Drug Court public defender who served only the Drug Court, did not take any other cases. All right? And I got that too.
Wow.
Well, congratulations. Well, congratulations.
You must have had a job on writing that petition.
So, that's 20, but that's flat, there'll be no offsets for payroll taxes or anything, because that's just, just like our other PD contracts, and that's their problem, they pay it out. So, I'll have, I'm really excited about that, because anytime you have a sort of a sideshow program like that, if people are doing other mainline business, it's very easy for that to become, you know, no one wants to...
Won't they forget?
You know, it is. You know, it's just last in line, it's that other thing I have to do, and that's not the way I'm trying to run this program. I'm taking it very, very seriously. And so I'm gonna have dedicated people who don't, who don't do anything else but that, so.
We've had a discussion that our caseload for public attorneys...
Yeah, that's another thing to talk about.
Is above and beyond our means.
Mm-hmm.
Will this relieve some of that?
Not at all.
Enough to make a difference in...
Not, not, well, I say not at all, that's not true, it would be a little bit. However, how many caseload, caseload minute points are assigned to those limited number of cases which are in Drug Court? You know, maybe three years from now, or two years from now, you're talking about 30 people or something like that. Right at the beginning, it will have very little effect, because you can't just...
Five, 10.
Five, 10 people, it's not gonna have...
It's not gonna be enough to make a difference on the other side.
No, on that other, that other problem I have that Dale's familiar with, because I went to counsel and they gave me approval for another full-time, another full-time public defender. I guess you guys were aware of that, right?
Yes.
So, and then I'm coming for a half as well. I didn't know enough at the time I put in for the last time they voted to ask for the half as well, because we hadn't had all the numbers in yet. But I guess yes, to some limited extent. Couple of years from now, hopefully, when the program is successful, you know, and we're at sort of a maximum velocity, you might have 30, 35 people in there, and now you're starting to talk about some serious, some serious impact, you know?
But that part-time for the Drug Court, it grows.
Yeah, it does.
Like a need, too, I mean...
Yeah, it does, but...
I mean, it's gonna shift that need.
Yeah, but this person's off, it's not gonna be taking cases. I'm not gonna, well, I can't do that because of the way the caseload allocation goes for the public defenders commission, because those cases they would take in Drug Court would go against their .66 average, which is those caps we're always busting out of and getting in trouble for. So it definitely has to be an attorney, and I've talked to somebody about it, I think it's gonna do it. But it's not one of our regular contract public defenders, so that would help nothing. If I put one of our regular contract public defenders on it, that'd just be that many fewer regular cases I could assign them, and that's zero help.
That's defeating the purpose.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so...
Well, it sounds great.
Okay.
I appreciate the effort that you put into it, and...
Yeah, I didn't know if, see, I don't have the, I guess I'll need to get a 144 in, but I don't even have the exact salary yet. I'm wrangling with that, too, for my Drug Court Coordinator. Trying to deal with DOC on shifting some money around in the 100 series of the grant with regarding benefits and base pay. So I'm gonna try to get on there as soon as I can possibly get that straightened out. It's been indicated to me that it might be possible that the person you were wanting to hire didn't need any benefits back, you basically didn't need insurance. You could move that over into straight pay, and then, then you're in a whole other class of category of people as far as experience that you might actually be able to get to entertain and offer. I have a person in mind, I'd like to, but they won't work for a base, but base pay on the grant was $35,000. If I could, if they're gonna allow me to move the grant-funded portion of the insurance payment over, now we're talking $48,000. It's a whole different, it's a whole different ballgame at that point, if they're gonna allow me to do that. So, I'm trying to find out, I'm playing phone tag with the DOC here the last couple of days, so...
This starts July 1st, then?
Yeah, no, I still have to do certification for the program, so I have all the manuals and everything has to pass muster before they actually let you start. And I have an appointment already for the auditor to come down and look at my stuff at the end of the month. Ironically, the day before I go to the National Drug Court Conference, so I'll get in Drug Court after Wazoo that week, right? I'll have the audit, and then immediately to the conference. So, as fast as they'll give me the approval, and as fast as I can act on the comments that they give, and turn things back into them, and get the final blessing, you know, then we'll be able to start. And by start, I mean, the prosecutor's gotta start with, you know, interviewing people and going over the cases and bringing people in, and we're not just gonna drag the first 12, you know, 10 or 12 people.
Hopefully, yes.
Yeah, no, that's not, that's not the way it works, so. It's almost like they're doing a job interview every time for who gets into Drug Court and who doesn't. I mean, it's, the policies and procedures manual for selecting people for Drug Court, it's a big, it's a big deep dive into the psychology of the people, and obviously, the point is, they're trying to pick someone who has a chance to be successful.
Very good.
Judge, is it possible, early on you were talking about 10 to 12 people at a time at each stage of it. Is it possible for this to grow into something that both of you, both of the judges would handle, or have a Drug Court and maybe have 12 in each?
We talked about that, that's hypothetically possible and not prohibited.
Okay. I mean, I understand that you don't want so many that you can't pay close attention to them, but I, I didn't know whether we could add to it, both courts?
Yeah, I mean, we wanna size it as big as we can get it and still run it properly. That's, that's the size we want. As big as it can possibly be and still be run properly, that's, that's what we want to be. The only thing is, national standards, you get past 30 people, or 32, I think, I'll have to look that up, it's right in there, 32, you have to have another watcher, a coordinator, you know, the coordinator, yeah. But obviously, the whole point of the program is super intensity and supervision.
And I understand.
So, if you get 60, then you're gonna need two people, or three, you know, 93, you know, as a maximum amount of people you can survey at that level of resolution, you know, so. And that would require that they give us more money in the grant.
Yes.
It's like to the tune of another $75,000 if we wanted another person. And I mentioned that in my grant application, actually. I went ahead and kinda put my vision in there about, you know, we would like to have another person, if we can grow this out, and maybe, not the next grant cycle, probably, one year's probably not long enough to go beyond that 30 cap, unlikely, possible but unlikely. So, be the next one after that, possibly we'd be needing a second. Maybe have a lead, and then a deputy coordinator or something like that. Yep, places, bigger places do that, they have whole, you know, whole staff.
But does, in those situations, does one judge handle all those, or...
Yeah, usually, it is usually, it is usually one judge.
Okay, so you...
Right. And what happens is, because I can't run my caseload and handle 150 people in Drug Court as well, so what the other judge does to help out, is I give a bunch of my regular cases over to the other court.
I see.
In our county, in fact, almost all the Drug Court participants are going to come into the program off of Circuit Court charges, not Superior Court charges, because they want you to get the, the more serious folks into the program. They're not wanting you to, you know, it's kinda like slow pitch softball versus hardball, all right? They're not wanting you to just start the program and pick some people that aren't really too big a jam yet, and then have some big, high success rate, pat yourself on the back. They're looking for that, believe me, they're, they're wise, they're wise to that scene, all right? So they're, they're looking for you to pick some people that are really jammed up on higher-level drug felonies, but those are the preferred customers, so to speak, for Drug Court. Those are in Circuit Court. So I'll be taking stuff off Judge Branstadter's hands when, when they enter into Drug Court, and we already talked about it, he's all on board with this, no problem at all. He'll take some of my stuff to compensate for the workload, yeah. He has also talked about, you know, depending on how this goes, and, you know, try to juggle too many balls at once, but talked about possibly a Veterans Court he would run down there as well, I don't know if you're familiar with that program. It's similar to Drug Court, only it's for mental health issues and with some of the vets. Sparks, maybe, I'm, be familiar with this, I suspect. Cambria, by the way, what a great hire. When I used to teach at IU East, she was my student, twice, one of the best I ever had, very bright lady. So we'll work with her and, and see how that goes. But that, that would be great, too. And we do have that problem. There's some, I mean, it's a really sad thing, it's another very needed program, you know? That may be part of our, maybe even the next application, you know? Talked to Judge Branstadter about it. Our, our biggest problem with all this stuff in this county is that we're already the two busiest courts in this part of the state, as it is, without any of these special courts. I think that's about it, but I'll, I'll be coming at you with a hire for the coordinator, and, and I guess actually, Ms. Joan, it's her hire, but it's money out of my grant for that special prosecutor position, but I'm pretty certain she's intending to hire Mr. Fall as long as he, his health and everything is fine, wants to do it. But I'll leave that to her, that's her decision.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
How long do you have anything for this week?
39.
Do we have any mail? Jane? Do we have any mail?
No.
We have no oil business. Diana Wright, Transit Resolution.
Can I interject here?
Yes.
I was hiding in the corner, it's very quiet over here.
Oh.
I really liked it.
Yeah, you were on my agenda way back here, and you weren't here that time.
Yes, I wasn't here yet. But, if that's okay, I'll just, I'll stick myself in here now and tell you that I'm looking forward to spending Judge's money, and I am going to spend it on Mr. Fall.
Thank you.
He has agreed to, to take that position. He hi, he actually retires on June 30th from the position of Chief Deputy, and it doesn't involve any paperwork for you all, but Ms. Gilda Kavanus, Mrs. Gilda Kavanus will be moving out of her position and into the Chief Deputy position effective July 1st. I have paperwork with the state to do for that.
Okay.
And that leaves a couple of, I have a couple of hires today. Gilda's vacancy of that position leaves me ripe for a bright attorney with a bright future, and...
I know you're stealing our...
Yeah, and it's Colin. We are very excited to bring him on board with us. I think he, being on...
I'm happy for you and sad for us.
Yes.
If he doesn't work out, can we have him back?
I'm sorry?
If he doesn't work out, can we have him back?
He's gonna work out. Yeah, he's gonna work out.
We know.
At some point, he may work out so well that I might be looking for him, so. That's the Deputy Prosecutor 144 that has been submitted to you all. With the grant, the good news is, we also were awarded a grant for a pre-trial felony diversion program. And the felony diversion program gave us money for an attorney to handle that, those cases that might be eligible and determine eligibility. That was in the sum of about $42,000. That gives us three, usually, Mr. Judd's position would be paid for from Child Support and this portion of the county budget that we're asking for, for him. We are still looking at our options and discussing how we're gonna reallocate duties. I think that perhaps the best truly part-time position in my office would be Child Support to handle just those, because there's no overlap. When we have either Deputy Prosecutor cases and criminal cases, or we have the felony diversion cases that might be eligible, we have overlap. We have people that maybe have been arrested for other things, or have other cases. Sometimes they overlap with Child Support, but it's not a true overlap that affects their case or their eligibility. So we're looking at, we don't know yet whether we're paying the rest of his salary out of support, giving him those duties, or, or making him the felony, yeah, felony diversion program. There's also the domestic grant as well, Domestic Violence Grant, that's in there, too. So we're, we're all, we're discussing that, but for now, that's the 144 that I'm asking that you approve. And also, my last deal didn't work out so well, and Crystal has decided to move elsewhere, and we have hired a position, we interviewed last week, interviewed four applicants in a morning. I actually asked Colin to join us, since it would be someone working with him, and we have chosen Ashley Hobbs, and that's who will be filling our Criminal Secretary/Bookkeeper. She is available to come in for training this week. I actually already have vacancy in my office, so there won't be an extra, there'll actually be less for this week to pay in wages, because I don't have a person. There's the possibility of her coming in a few hours for training this week, and then starting full-time on Monday. She will certainly start on Monday. If that's okay, and it works out, that she can come in and do a little bit of training, I'd like your approval to go ahead and, and do that. It, it would be, we'd probably be paying her two or three hours versus paying the person full-time. We're not, it's, we're not gonna be doubled up in the office, if I'm making that clear.
Okay. I need a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the 144 for probation. Second?
This is Prosecutor's Office, I think, for probation.
Prosecutor, yeah.
Good move.
Prosecutor's Department.
He's just trying to keep me from taking Colin.
I'll sign it.
Anyway, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Three ayes.
Thank you, and I'm so sorry I wasn't here when you first called my name.
That's fine. Thank you for jumping up and getting in your words, we need to have you, okay? New business, Diana Wright.
Okay, I'm here for the Fayette County Public Transit and the Senior Center. We are applying for the grant, Operating 2019 Grant is due in June, and I have a resolution that I've given to Jane. I have for you to sign stating that.
I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution for the transit.
Second?
Good move, and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. And I signed it.
I just wanna give you a little bit of information. We ended 2018 with transporting about 34,000 customers in, from Fayette County, all over the state of Indiana. Anyone 60 and older can ride the transit system in Fayette County for free. There's no charge on that. And already in the first quarter, we've already had about 9,400 customers in the first quarter this year.
Diana, but anyone can ride the transit?
Anyone can ride the transit. It is just, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
It's just free to anyone 60 and older.
Because I think that's a misconception.
It is a misconception, and most of our riders are younger now.
We're finally getting the word out that we do have bus transportation in Fayette County.
We do, and, like I said, we transport all over the state of Indiana.
I think one of the things I found interesting was that if you wanted to go to, you're flying out, that you can get the senior transportation, and that will take you up to the airport, rather than having your cars laying out in the parking lot for a week or two while you're on vacation. You can have the senior transport take you up, and then come pick you up when you come back in. It's a handy way to get to the airport. Along with lots of doctors' offices.
Lots, you make lots of hospital visits for people.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you very much, appreciate all you do, Diana.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
Mr. Hillman.
Ten people remind me about the date today. I'm not kidding.
Well, you're forgiven for not being here the first time.
I was right at this door, I was right over in the station. Believe that.
I'm glad to know I'm not the only one whose faces are up tomorrow.
Good morning, I'm John Hillman, president of the Whitewater Valley Railroad, and I'm here to ask for permission, our annual request for use of the parking lots during our event. And nothing's changed, it's the same year after year, the same, the date moves one day because of the calendar year, but everything else is the same. And this will be our 18th year that we've had this event and there are only 37 of these events in the whole United States and Canada. And we were one of the very first to have one. And the total ridership for over the first 17 years, we brought in over 4 million people to this event. And most of these people are from out of town. And it's one of our most important fundraisers. That's why I'm here.
Thank you for making sure that they didn't get the tent on my handicap spaces last year.
Are these tent locations set in stone?
Pretty well, yeah.
Okay. So we don't need it in our motion to make sure that handicap parking spaces aren't taken out?
No, I've listened to the evidence.
Okay, all right. I'd make a motion that we allow the Whitewater Valley Railroad to utilize the county's portion of the parking lot for their event. I'll second it.
Been moved to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
We need it this year. Last year was not the greatest, 'cause it rained.
I was gonna say...
Had the event really hard.
The weather didn't agree with you, did it?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ori Cummings from Smart Watch.
Morning.
Good morning.
Do you guys have a copy?
Yes, I got the email.
Do you like a hard copy just in case you take notes or you could maybe call?
Okay.
I'm Ori Cummings with, I'm a project engineer with Smart Watch. So the reason why we wanted to come in, I spoke with Commissioner King and she invited me in today. So we're, we're the company that has the exclusive contract with Duke Energy to perform the small business direct install of projects. It's a great program, you see the benefits of it, but there also are some issues with restrictions they could put on us through the program because it is specifically for specific fixtures and so there's sometimes access to fixtures can be an issue as well as facility size. So obviously, you have a couple of facilities that are larger than what we'd be able to do as part of that program. So that's where I come in. I focus on larger comprehensive projects that do not have restrictions, they're not associated with Duke Energy, they're basically built off of a legislation in the state of Indiana that allows for guaranteed energy savings contracts. So that's what this handout is that I have for you here. And it just highlights, the first couple just highlights some information on our company. Thought process with these projects is to focus on energy savings as a whole for the county, so looking at everything that uses utility expenses, so gas, electric, water, as well as maintenance expenses. So these projects, what they do and what is required of them as part of the legislation is that they have to utilize your current operational expenses to pay for the project. So there's no additional taxpayer dollars used for these projects. It's budget neutral, it's required to be budget neutral, so this cannot cost you anymore after the project's over with than it was costing before. So that's the thought process and that's why these projects are so successful. So what we do is we'll actually come in and we'll look at these facility improvement measures. There's several here that I listed that we typically focus on and then there can be additional items that might come up depending on your facility types. But typically, you know, the LEDs are the kind of that low-hanging fruit that we always look at. Water conservation in jails is a big one typically. We can reduce the water usage in a jail facility by 50% by putting certain valves in and low-flow fixtures. There's also some safety mechanisms that are associated with those 'cause inmates can, you know, constantly flush the toilet 'cause there's nothing better to do and they flood the cells and there's maintenance issues, safety issues associated with that that we can help resolve. And then the big things are usually compelling reasons, which are older equipment, so I know the jail is kind of that age where you might have already been renovating stuff or maybe looking to replace stuff. These projects allow you to use savings to replace capital expenditures. So you're not using capital for these projects, you're using, you know, those operational expenses, taking that money that you're paying on utility bills and put it to better use by investing it into your buildings. That's the thought process. And then the big kind of piece to that is that we have to guarantee everything. So that's where it's called a guaranteed energy savings. It's essentially performance-based, so if this stuff doesn't perform the way we say it's gonna perform, we have to come back and fix it. And that's just, we're held accountable after the fact. So when we guarantee that you're gonna save $50,000 a year and you only save $40,000 that year, we actually have to write you a check for the difference. And that's what makes these projects stay budget neutral, so you'll never be in a situation where you're paying out-of-pocket costs beyond what you were already gonna be paying. So that's, that's very huge for these projects and it's a requirement. Another thing, building envelope, so that's just basically insulation, if you have older windows, window replacements are typically big improvements that are included in these projects. Because obviously window replacements are very expensive and on their own, they're a 200-year return on investment, but when you partner them with lighting and some building automation and things like that, it brings it down to a more reasonable payback period. Are there any questions on that or anything? Okay. Then I just have some of the other benefits listed here under the program benefits, the out-of-pocket cost we talked about, guaranteed savings, that's when we, we'll actually come back annually after the project's over with and report back the savings to you. So we'll do what's called a measurement verification, that's required as part of the legislation. So that's when we'll come back and say, this is exactly how much you guys saved this past year and that's when, if it is less, we have to reimburse you. But the goal is for it to be more, so you're not just putting all of your savings towards paying off this project, there's still, you know, some net cash flow that you're gonna generate, so have savings initially, initially as soon as the project is complete. Guaranteed equipment performance, that's just, that's an obvious one, but if it's not performing the way we said, we have to fix it, we're held accountable, so that's, you know, slightly different than your typical procurement where project's over with, contractors are gone, you know, you'll have warranties, but they're not really gonna help you with them. You know, if there's warranties, we'll make sure that we help you process those, things like that, 'cause obviously there's, you know, when you do a larger project, there's gonna be things that go wrong, but it's us being there to help you correct it and so you're not having to not know who to call and you just call me, it's easy and I'll take care of it. And hopefully I can help with the issue that's going on over there with those lights, even though it's not my...
I was going to wonder if you would be able to...
That's not my team, but I'll, I'm gonna go over to the office right after this and maybe light some fires over there so I can take, help you hopefully get to the bottom of that. And then, I think that's it for that. So then there's just some sample financials here. This just kind of gives you an idea of what a project looked like, so what we do is, we do a feasibility assessment for you. So we'll actually come out, we analyze your utility bills, walk through all the facilities with our energy engineers, lighting engineers, and we'll put together kind of a project, potential project, that this is what it might look like, this is a self-funding project, 'cause we wanna make sure that there is a self-funding project before we do too much work on this. And this is something we do completely free and we provide you with a sample financial like this that's specific to your project with a list of a number of measures of things that, and we talked to your maintenance crew and we wanna make sure that we're targeting things that are compelling issues for you right now that are costing you maintenance costs and things like that. But this, this basically shows that we, we develop a cost that's a guaranteed cost, there's no change orders associated with this project, so we cannot have a change order. So once the project cost is agreed upon, no matter what happens from then on out, that's the project cost. So, you know, it's a design-build project, so we're gonna design it as we go and do the building ourselves. We offer the turnkey service there. This sample just shows that beyond paying for the project, they actually generated $360,000 in cash flow for their, for the, this is a county project in southern Illinois, I believe. And so there was $360,000 that they developed over a 20-year period in addition to paying for the project, so all the equipment maintenance savings that they had and then the equipment replacement savings. So it was, it was a pretty lucrative project for them and it was something that, that money would've just gone to the utility company if they didn't do this project, so it was very beneficial. And their overall energy reduction was 66% for the county, which is higher than normal. There's a lot of solar associated with this one, but typically we'll see right around 30, 35% savings, so you'd be reducing your energy usage by about a third for the entire county. So take a look at your utility expenses, take a third of that off and that's kind of the savings that you could potentially be looking at for these projects. And then I just put a timeline in there to kind of give you an example. It's pretty lengthy, so each step, we are very thorough, each step gives you guys an opportunity to ask as many questions as possible for us to make sure that everyone feels completely comfortable with that step before moving to the next step. And that's why each step usually takes a couple months. And then the whole process usually takes about a year, year and a half. But that's for your benefit, to help you feel comfortable with everything. And then there's no actual commitment from you until, you know, five or six months in after we've been working together for a while. So we've worked with counties for five or six months or even longer in some cases and they just decided it wasn't for them and they walked away. No cost was incurred and it was just, that's the process that we typically go through. So we're, that's our expectation, so it's, you know, it's no hard feelings obviously at the end of it. That's just, it has to be the right fit for you guys for us to, you know, pursue the project moving forward. And that's about it. My contact information's on the back page if you have any questions about anything.
If, if you put together a proposal and you talked about the savings, we could use the savings of our utility costs to pay for this investment, then will you break down, for instance, how much will save electric, how much will save with gas? Because if we have those in separate line items, we'll need to be able to transfer the right amounts of money.
Yeah, for the final, what we do at, once you guys decide you wanna take a closer look at things, we do an investment grade audit and in that step, we actually will break it down per utility expense, maintenance expense, per building, and you'll have all that information at your disposal to kind of figure out how you, 'cause really what you end up doing is you have to reallocate budget line items.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's how you would do it.
I have to move them to...
Right. 'Cause that's all, that's all it is, is, you know, you're taking these items and you're cutting a portion of them off and moving it to one other item that is kind of an appropriation to, you know, pay off the term of the project.
For the scope of project, are you thinking our three main buildings here, our jail, our annex and the courthouse, or what are you...
I would assume that those would be the biggest energy users, but if, typically what we end up doing is the larger buildings don't have as many big needs because those are typically the buildings that the money gets put into 'cause they're the big-use buildings, but they use a lot of energy, so we can actually get a ton of savings out of those buildings. And if there's other smaller buildings that need a lot of help, that savings can use to pay for those buildings. 'Cause typically the smaller buildings don't have enough energy usage to justify some of the repairs they need, but you can kind of squeeze it out of the larger buildings for that.
So even though we have qualified and taken advantage, or trying to take advantage of the LED program for the jail and the community corrections, you would still be interested in looking at those buildings?
Yeah, there's other, there's other things within those buildings that we could do beyond the LED lights. And like I mentioned, that there's only certain things that they can do as part of that program. There's some additional things that we'd be able to do even with the lighting that would be even more of a savings opportunity.
Because we are, we are at a point where we're needing to look at the jail as a major renovation project.
Yeah, and it's 29 years old and that's about when equipment starts to fail.
Right.
You get that 25 to 35-year life expectancy out of, you know, air handler units, rooftop units, boilers, things like that. And those are obviously really expensive items to replace.
And everything you've named as part of this, would be part of this program?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are all items. There's all energy, energy savings aspect to all of those items, obviously by going to newer equipment, less maintenance, things like that. So this program would be a way for you guys to upgrade those without coming up with a lot of money, obviously, or typically what happens is emergency replacement because you don't usually have the money to replace it proactively, you just wait till it fails and then that typically is more expensive, but it's really the only feasible option. So that's unfortunate situation that most counties are in.
Have you spoken with our maintenance supervisor?
I have not yet.
Okay.
That would be the next step is speaking with them and if you guys approve the feasibility assessment, I would ask them, you know, meet with them and collect utility bills and then set up a time to see the building.
Think you'd have it for free, right? I guess, I guess I would be of the opinion that maybe we do it a little differently and maybe ask him to speak with Bill and let Bill recommend us to do the study.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, no problem. That's Bill Gray?
Yeah, that's Bill Gray. If you'd speak with him and then if, if he wants to move forward, then we'll do it on his recommendation.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And I believe it's the division with your company that did the lighting over and the community corrections.
Yes.
So if you can go with Michelle and find out what's going on over there and give us some feedback on that, certainly appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, like I said, I'll reach out to our guys and light some fires on there.
I'm not so sure that there's not some questions with the jail project as well. Bill will be more familiar with that as well and so I, you know, because I do know that I had some correspondence with, with some of your billing people and, and I talked to Bill and Bill said, "I tried to tell them that the project's not done yet." And I said, "Okay," and I give him a phone number to talk to because that's who I had talked to me and that was the last I'd heard, that he was, he had made contact with them, that particular person, so...
Yeah. Yeah, those, our guys do a great job, but it is, it's a volume thing, so they go from one project to the next rapidly and then sometimes they don't finish up with it.
It's corporate America.
Yeah. Luckily, we're a small company, so the larger projects, when we do comprehensive projects, we're just doing one at a time. We're making sure we, you know, take care of everything you guys need before we leave the site, so. Plus, we don't get paid until you sign off on the project, so...
It sounds very interesting. If you could spend some time with Bill.
Yeah, definitely. I'll reach out to him and then hopefully maybe next month we'll get back together.
The next meeting or something?
Yeah.
Anytime we can save money, we're very happy about the whole thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ori. Dale Munson, would you like to talk to us about your proposal that you could resolve that with our motion earlier? Okay. I had you down here as more new business, but since we took care of it with Warren, we don't need to talk to you. You just want to be on television, all right?
Not at all.
Okay. We can handle that. I'd like a motion for approval of claims.
I'll move to approve the claims in the table. Second.
Okay, moved to second, approve claims in table. All in favor say aye.
All aye.
Three ayes. And I have all this wonderful paperwork to sign here.
We say, now, this could be a different, um, one, it's on an individual basis. We'll go back to more individual, individual score.
Okay.
Diana, we're not, we're not gonna discuss where to put that sign.
Oh, yes. Bill's not here and we wanted to talk with Phil about placing the historic sign. Bill's not here and we wanted to talk with Bill about placing the historic sign.
Oh, yes. Let's see.
What we have to do, we have to call eight, call 800 DIG at eight-
Yeah, 811.
Yeah.
Because we can't go digging and putting a post in the yard unless we know we're not tearing up somebody's power lines or-
Yes.
We don't want to shut all the power off to the courthouse.
And I've spoken to Bill about the Kelly Highway sign guy coming up, but he didn't sign.
We, Diana and Thomas Schroeder wrote a grant for the historic Connersville and we have a sign sitting in our office along with the post that go with it to go out in the front of the courthouse that states that this is a historic site and all that beautiful things. I'm not sure what's on the sign. It's still enclosed in the-
We need to open it and check it out.
Two-inch plywood or something, yeah. But it will recognize our county as historic site or our courthouse. Have we already approved this?
Yes, a couple meetings ago. First meeting in April.
Okay.
He's coming over.
In a minute time, we can get signed.
We can get signed, yeah. Is this, is this a sign, Diana, that absolutely needs to be in the front or?
When we did the grant application, we had placement in the front area somewhere. I don't think they, we pulled it into one specific spot, but obviously.
Do you know the measurements of it? It seems to be helpful.
Yeah. I think it's like three feet by four feet, so it's, it's pretty, a good size.
That's what the box is. Yeah, I saw the box. Do you know whether it was in pieces or whether that's how it looks like? Our front's about four.
I'm sorry, it was the February 20th meeting. It was brought up in the first meeting in February.
Okay.
And then it didn't pass the first time, so then it came up again in the second meeting and passed this again.
Okay. This is the property that-
Yeah. So what's the one? Oh, does this one? Yeah, I'm sorry. So we don't need any motion to sign the point?
Colin said no, because it was voted on, absolutely voted on twice in two February meetings.
Do you want to sign? I don't have a sign. There he is. This sign is in the commissioner's office.
Okay.
And still in a crate. Diana thinks it's three by four or something like that.
It's not that big.
No.
No, it's not the billboard, but it's close to.
Well, yeah. I'm thinking maybe that corner. I don't know. Let me look at the signs exactly. Because is it something they're going to put in country or what?
I, I don't know. Dave Jarboe from the Highway Department said he would place it for us.
Okay, okay.
So that would take that off you.
Well, we have to call 811 and get it.
I'm sorry.
We have to call 811 and find out before we do anything.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'll call the DIG. The gas, electric, water are free.
But our grant deadline is June 1st, so that's why the push to get it.
Oh, it has to be put out by June 1st?
Yes, yes.
So do you want to coordinate that?
Yeah.
This, yet this week?
Yeah.
With Richard?
Yeah, I'll look at that. I'll get with Richard and then we'll get, I'll call the DIG people.
Okay.
They're named Mark and then I'll get them.
How's your name?
It's, it's getting better.
Okay. Careful with it.
Well, I'm being careful, believe me. Okay, thanks guys.
Bill, the motor up top?
Yeah.
Are you still-
We're still running on it, so.
Are you still trying to make plans on it?
Yeah, because, I mean, if it goes out, your air is going to go out.
Right.
It's summertime, we're going, we can't lose it then either, but yes, I'm still working on it. I've got most of the bids in.
On crane and everything?
Yeah. Because the one bid was already using Chumel and that's who we were going to have to use anyway.
Yes.
The project was going to be about to save.
All right.
But I'll get with you on that and with numbers.
And are we, are we ready to advertise for a roof for the annex or for bids?
Yeah, because I've already got one, you know.
Okay.
And the other two companies I talked to are going, they're going to go with it because it's slate. But I'm sure I'll try to get somebody to give you a bid.
So are we bidding, are we looking at taking the slate off and replacing it with asphalt or?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay. Can we also look at bids for paint and trim for that?
That's another thing that Chumel, he gave me a bid. That's another thing he was concerned about because the, the trim on the roof is that metal you're talking about.
All the flashing-
So that would have to be done when the roof was finished, like to put it back on.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah. Trying to find somebody that, I can't remember the company that did that. That's been years ago.
It's been, it was put out by the commissioner.
Yeah, the first time.
First time.
Yeah.
And I can't, seems like it wasn't local.
No, they, no, they, they was from out of state. Let me look at that and see what I find out.
Now, I don't know, I, I know someone, I can't think their name right off, but I can get it for you. They paint grain systems.
That would be-
And they're really good.
Yeah.
They're really good. But I don't know if they do commercial buildings as, as well.
You will, get to talk to them and see.
But I can get that name for you.
Okay, do that.
But they're from Ohio.
Okay. And I'll see if I can find out who this company was and get at least a couple bids.
Falmouth Farms, Falmouth Elevator uses them. And we had them paint our elevator at Bentonville a few years ago. They do good work.
If they do commercial work, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Well, give me an number and I'll-
Okay. But those are projects that definitely have to have, we have to address those this year.
Reading I went in here this morning, I've got a motor down in drill, that's where I'm at. I got it returned down, I'm repairing it, so.
Okay.
I've been on it all morning, but all they've done for me, well, maybe. Okay, thanks guys.
Thank you, Bill. Does that take care of that, Diana?
Done.
What you need?
Hey Gary, you talked about a crane, appropriate, you talked, you know, that company that does to Falmouth's.
Hawken?
Yeah.
Is it Hawken?
Yeah. I don't, he's done work for the county before.
Oh, has he?
He's had cement boxes on the West Gavro.
Okay. You don't need to tell Bill that then because-
I just think that's a name.
Yeah, Hawken. Because that's what I wanted to say about the name of the painter and then I thought, no, no, that's the crane company. And Shaftstall has a crane as well. They have a store now up there on 40, just where the old Land, Jackson, is it Jackson Landscape or Johnson Landscape used to be, where the storage barns are.
Oh.
Very west of Bentonville. But they're out of Columbus. Their home base is. Call them if you're drunk.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All papers say aye?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, John.